The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, March 15th, 2021, will please come to order. This evening, we will once again be operating under altered rules of procedure.
Sorry.
That are consistent with the terms of Governor Holcomb's various executive orders, as well as the orders of our local health officials. To that end, our meeting is being broadcast remotely. Members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting, with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments that they wish to make, one person at a time. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing his or her public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank you all for your cooperation. And with that, we will move into the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and remembrance of the more than 534,000 Americans who have lost their lives as a result of COVID-19, as well as the unfortunate passing of School City of Mishawaka teacher, administrator, and coach Greg Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our condolences certainly go out to Katie Smith, her sons, as well as all Greg's friends and family members, and his friends and colleagues at School City of Mishawaka. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of March 1st, 2021. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a letter from the City Plan Commission regarding their recommendations from their March 9th, 2021 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Plan Commission was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following proposed ordinance was considered. Petition number 2021-02, a petition submitted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission requesting to amend the Penn Plan Unit Development to allow an eight-foot-tall anti-climb screening fence to surround the new Judy Creek Water Treatment Plant. The Commission with a vote of 8 to 0 recommended approval. All other previously approved conditions and development regulations per ordinances 5341, 5342, and 5613 remain applicable to the property pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-605. The Mishawaka Plan Commission hereby certifies to the Mishawaka Common Council the attached proposed ordinance regarding the above matter. This is signed by Kerry Myers, Administrative Planner.
Thank you. This evening, we have no reports of any special committee, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is the Penn PUD amendment to allow an eight-foot-high anti-climb screening fence to surround the new Judy Creek Water Treatment Plant, lot number 2 of Judy Creek Business Park vacant land.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-12 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Resolutions.
Yes, Mr. President, we have Resolution R. 2021-04, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving an agreement extending the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium and authorizing the execution thereof.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-04. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Mr. President, Members of Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. So the Housing Consortium, we've been part of the consortium for many years now. This is just the same agreement that we are renewing. Since I've been actively involved, I believe this is the third renewal. Since I've been there, the wording hasn't changed, but the dates are changing. The Housing Consortium itself deals with low-income housing. It is primarily run by the City of South Bend, and then St. Joseph County and Mishawaka are members. Laura Rigosa on my staff is our member of that. And it primarily deals with, again, low-income housing and the distribution of federal home funds. So a good example would be the car work bill received quite a bit of the home funds. Other projects include Mary Phillips' school, when that was redone, also received quite a bit of home funds. There's really nothing, no changes in the agreement, but if you have any questions, I'd be trying, I'll try to answer them. If not, I'll get them for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who's physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Please come forward.
Good evening. Myron Laramo, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the South Bend Area Realtors, 1537 Northside Boulevard in South Bend, and I just would like to encourage the Council to approve this resolution. Affordable housing is important to our community across the boards. It's an known fact that children who grow up in an owned home are much more likely to have success in school and be successful in life. It holds families together. It holds communities together, makes for better neighborhoods. So I just encourage you to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Laramo? Sorry to stop you abruptly when there are no questions, but thank you, sir. Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2021-05, resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, declaring a certain area in the City of Mishawaka, Indiana to be an economic revitalization area. This is Wellpet LLC declaratory resolution.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-05. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, Members of Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. Really, as was discussed at the pre-meeting, this is the, declaratory is the first of the two-step process. So this allows for the, if approved this evening, this would allow for the advertising of the confirming resolutions. This, as part of the notice that is sent between the first and second resolution, it goes to taxing entities that may have an interest in the abatement process. Again, those listening online that may not be clear with the abatement process, this would only be for the new increased assessed value associated with the improvement. The company would still continue to pay taxes on the previous unabated amount of assessed valuation that they have, both in property and machinery. I would also note that with the comments, as it stands right now, staff will be preparing it as a standard 180, 60, 40, 20 application, if there's a feeling amongst the council to change those percentages. As you know, a number of years ago, the legislature changed the rules and allowed us to change those percentages based on any given need. So based on President Hicksonbaugh's communication, we will prepare it in that manner unless we hear otherwise. So, thank you. I'm happy to answer the questions that you have, and I'll rely on the folks at Wellpet to actually give the presentation on the project.
Certainly. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince?
Mr. Belovich?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ken, is there any, in the provision itself, is there any language for a possibility of a clawback if the equipment that's installed does not work?
Um, so there's a clawback if they do not do what they say they are going to do. If they do what they say they're going to do, and there's still a smell, there is no provision to clawback at that point. This is not a sliding scale based on if Councilman Belovich likes or doesn't like the smell at the end of the day. But if they would not install the equipment that they say they're going to, definitively there is a clawback provision.
And then we will, we will talk about it on an annual basis, like we do all of the other abatements, I would presume?
For the duration of the abatement, they would have to submit the compliance, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Compton?
Ken, to clarify, if we do want to change the abatement from, I think you've drawn it up for what you recommended.
Right.
If we do want to change that, that'd be the next meeting we would do.
That's correct. And so really, in my communication, we were looking for feedback, of which we've received. So, again, you have the ability as the council to amend those percentages.
Right. But it's the next meeting we would do so.
Correct.
Other questions for Mr. Prince?
Ken, just for clarification, as you and Mr. Compton have discussed, and you mentioned your comments, there's some flexibility with regard to the percentage of abatement that is granted in each individual year. But just for clarification, there is also flexibility with regard to the length of time. You know, the staff has, if I remember correctly, you proposed a five-year abatement. We could go up to 10, if I'm not mistaken, with regard to the law, but that would be somewhat outside the scope of our own local precedent with regard to how we've treated similar issues.
Oh, that's correct.
Yes. Okay. And not so much a question, but a comment to follow up on Mr. Belovich's comments. I continue to believe that the commitment on the part of Wellpet to abate the odor issue that has been discussed in this chambers and in other conversations in local government for below these many years, that that is a critical component of this. Wellpet's a good corporate citizen of Mishawaka, but on behalf of the community and the neighborhoods, you know, that remediation of that odor issue is critical. And while I would agree with you that, strictly speaking, when I read the statute, that there isn't a provision to make that odor issue specifically part of the review, if this passes, it would be my intention to ask Wellpet to update us on an annual basis with regard to where they're at, and to give us an opportunity to compare the projections of how they're going to be able to abate the odor issue with the actual implementation of the odor control equipment. The other thing I would say is that with regard to both this resolution that's in front of us tonight, and then the confirmatory resolutions, there are a couple of findings that we have to make under the statute. One is that whether any other benefits about what information was requested are benefits that can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed described redevelopment or rehabilitation. And I think that the information that we've received on the odor control issue falls into that category. And the other finding that we have to make is whether the totality of the benefits is sufficient to justify the deduction. Again, I think that Wellpet is a valued corporate resident of Mishawaka, but without the remediation of the odor issue, I would be hard-pressed personally to find that the benefit of the tax abatement justifies the deduction without that odor control component being there to, as part of the totality of the benefits that we as a community are going to receive from this. So I agree with your, with your earlier statement, but I do think that it's appropriate for us as a council to take a long, hard look at how this project is going to better the quality of life in the community and in that neighborhood in particular with regard to that odor control issue. And if I misstated and said noise at some point in time, it's only because I have noise on my mind during, based upon prior conversations. But again, that odor control issue is critical to me with regard to the justification for the consideration of this proposal.
No, and on behalf of the administration, we've been working on this, as you know, for years, and have been encouraging this. So we're well pleased with what Wellpet has put forward, and the success will be is that they don't have to monitor or update you on a yearly basis, because that'll be readily apparent. That's our goal.
That would be ideal. But you make a valuable point. I do appreciate the work that you and Mr. Hinkle and the mayor and others have done to try to continue to partner with Wellpet to address this issue on behalf of the community. So in my mind, the council and the administration speak with one voice with regard to this issue, and it's of critical importance to the community that that be addressed. So thank you for your work on that.
Any other questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dr. Mitchell, 50638 Edgewood Ranger. And I just wanted to address the council, and thank you for consideration for the abatement for the Wellpet project. It will definitely assist us as we work to become better neighbors and improve the quality of living in the neighborhoods in the southern Mishawaka area, and help us to continue to employ people of the city for years to come.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mitchell?
Just one, not so much a question as a comment, maybe a general reminder. You were very gracious, and along with Mr. Tasha John, and spent some time with us in an informational session not too long ago, and I thought that the PowerPoint that you did was really well done. If you have a chance, if you could send that through to us, via his gestures in the back of the room, I think Mr. Tasha John is falling on his sword and saying that it was his responsibility to send that.
They did send it. I'm sorry. They did send it, and it falls on me.
I prefer to blame Mr. Tasha John.
Okay. I will send that out to the council.
That's okay.
I'm very sorry.
Gentlemen, then, thank you for sending that through, and I'm sure we'll receive it before we get to the next stage in the process. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward.
And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Compton?
Mr. President, we have council members, and I think this might be their first abatement. And this is a two-step process. I just want to make sure they understand what we're doing and how it works and such. So if there's any questions or maybe an explanation at this point, I don't know. I don't know if, you know, I just wanted to make sure. I know my first time, kind of confused on why we're doing this twice.
PowerPoint?
Thank you, Mr. Compton.
But if we're all good, let's move forward.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question, not so much for Mr. Prince, or the representatives of Wellpet, but for my friend and colleague, Mr. Emmons. Mr. Emmons, do you think that there's a chance that the neighbors who live in closer proximity to Wellpet than some of the rest of us might be interested in having another meeting with representatives of Wellpet to learn more about this proposal?
You're correct, Mr. President. I've been in contact with the Wellpet area over there, and people to the east, all the way up to Main Street, and that, and they are interested in meeting. I told them that we would get with them first part of April, and that, for a meeting, and that. So that way, the weather may break, and people will be more active to get out, and that. So, yes. And then you had mentioned maybe contacting Marion also, and that, and that possibility, whether we combine it or have two separate meetings.
And I will add for the record that I have reached out to representatives of Marion High School, made them aware of tonight's meeting, and also advised them that there was a chance that we might be asking our friends from Wellpet and others to participate in the type of meeting that you described. And I told them that we would update them when anything was scheduled.
Yeah, I've already talked to a number of people in the community about the meeting that we had here, the last meeting, and what Wellpet has proposed, and what the new equipment is supposed to do, and the type of equipment it is, and also raising the stack and that. And everybody that I've talked with seems very pleased, and they're very hopeful that this is a solution that will cure the problem good. And they're interested in actually listening to Wellpet, and that, to get a few more minor points that maybe I have missed, and that, to convince them that it is going to be a very workable solution. And so, and I've talked with Doug about that, and we're going to set up a meeting, I'd say, in April.
All right. Thank you for your work on that. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 9 to 0. Resolution R. 2021-06, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving the request for the Indiana State Board of Accounts to examine the financial statements prepared in accordance with GAAP generally accepted accounting practices.
This is a public hearing on proposed Resolution 2021-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Rebecca Miller, City Controller, presenting tonight Resolution 2021-06. It's a request by the State Board of Accounts. They are requiring us now, their directive 2015-4, that the legislative body must request of them to perform an audit based on GAAP. And as you know, we always prepare our financial statements with generally accepted accounting principles, and they do audit it based on that. The only thing different is that now we must request from them to do our audit that way. Just a formality.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the Controller?
Not so much a question, but another comment. I had the pleasure of sitting in on the pre-conference and the post-conference at the time of the last audit. And once again, you and your staff are to be congratulated for the great job that you do to make sure that we have accurate and reliable and dependable accounting practices in place. So thank you for the work that you and everybody does to make that happen.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. And then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 9 to 0.
This evening, we have no ordinances on second reading, so we will move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Thank you. This evening, we have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business. First, with a reminder, not only for ourselves, for anybody who is participating remotely, that our regular meeting for April 5th has been changed to April 12th in light of spring break in most of our local school corporations. So our first meeting in April will be Monday, April 12th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Is there any other new business to come before the council? Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a monthly reminder that we will be hosting our Twin Branch Neighborhood Watch meeting this Wednesday, March 17th, at 7:00 PM. Our guest speaker will be Richard Freeman, who is the president of the Internal Order of Police, City of Mishawaka. He will be our guest speaker, and perhaps we can convince him, due to St. Patrick's Day, dressing like little leprechauns, perhaps, but I doubt it. But we'll see him at 7:00 PM, March 17th, via Zoom, and I will send the details out on my Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Other new business?
Then a couple items. At the beginning of the meeting, we stood in silent memory of Greg Smith, who tragically passed, boy, about a week ago, unexpectedly, and who was known to several of us, really well-respected educator, and more importantly, good family man, and just an all-around great guy. As I indicated earlier, I think our thoughts and prayers go out to Greg's family, as well as his friends and his colleagues. But I would be remiss if I didn't note that at the funeral this past Saturday, our friend and colleague, who was very close to Greg Smith, Mr. Mamalenti, was asked to take on one of those tasks that few of us look forward to, to speak in memory of his friend. And although Mr. Mamalenti wasn't speaking on behalf of the council, I'm pleased to report that he not only represented himself and his family and his friend with great dignity and honor in his remarks, but he also represented this council and this community very well with regard to the great job that he did in remembrance of his friends. So, matter condolences, and thank you for everything that you've done for Greg's family. Thank you. And then, as most of us are aware, we just passed the one-year anniversary of the pandemic. And to say that this has been an unprecedented year in the history of the United States, as well as the City of Mishawaka, is an understatement. Earlier, I made mention of the fact that, at present, more than 534,000 Americans have lost their lives as a result of the pandemic. But in light of the fact that we have just passed the one-year anniversary, I went back and I looked for some information as to what the death toll was on March 15th of 2020. And at that time, depending upon the source, there were about 41 to 65 deaths in the United States. So just based on those sheer numbers, as well as the experience that all of us have shared throughout this, this pandemic has been a life-altering event for, I would say, everybody who resides in the United States, as well as the City of Mishawaka. But as tough as this year has been, I don't think we can go too long without continuing to recognize the people who have really stepped up and done great things in our community to help us all get through this. First and foremost, once again, I think it's worthy of recognition that we note the great work that's been done by our first responders, as well as all of our city employees who have worked throughout this pandemic to make sure that our city services have continued to be delivered without interruption. Of course, our local healthcare workers have been vital in making sure that all of us are safe and have worked tirelessly under, you know, stressful circumstances throughout. Our teachers and our school staff and our students have really risen to the occasion. If you compare to the experience here locally to other communities, as difficult as has been, our students have had an opportunity in Mishawaka to be physically present in schools much longer than other communities. And that's a testament to the hard work of the teachers, staff, administrators, and students and parents who make up our local school corporations. students and parents who make up our local school corporations. Any number of other essential workers running the gamut, from our grocery store workers to the people working in the drugstores, to the people working in the restaurants to provide takeout delivery, have also risen to the occasion and provided great service to the community. I think our city administration has really stepped up, both the mayor, his department heads, and everyone who works with them, to provide good leadership and guidance throughout this pandemic, and I appreciate the work that they've done. I also want to acknowledge the work that has been done by my colleagues on the city council and our city clerk. We have continued to conduct our meetings, sometimes with a fair number of us participating remotely, but we have continued to meet throughout and to do the people's business throughout this time of trial, and I appreciate the support and the work that each of you has done. Last but not least, the citizens of Mishawaka have really risen to the occasion. It has not been an easy process. It has not been anything that anybody has enjoyed or wants to go through again, but I think that we as a community have done everything that we can to get through this in the best possible way, and everyone has played their part in terms of making this work on behalf of all. I think we all hear and see almost on a daily basis that the end appears to be in sight with regard to this pandemic, but we're not there yet. So while we celebrate where we're at and the signs of hope, I think it's important for us to continue to follow the guidance of our public health officials, to continue to wear masks and to socially distance, as we all have done here this evening, and thank you for that. But if we can remain vigilant in the short term, I think that the summer is going to be much more enjoyable this year than it was last year. So thank you to all for everything that you've done to help Mishawaka survive this time of trial.
And with that, if there is no other business to come before the council, Mr. Mamalenti?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. And the only reason I'm bringing this up, because I know in conversation you and I have had, we've mentioned it and discussed it in great detail. So I think I'd be remiss if we didn't add to the list, that well-deserved list that you had mentioned, the outstanding and diligent work of Assistant Chief Brian Thomas and Dr. Migliore at the Activate Health Clinic, and her entire staff. I think between the both of those two groups, they've worked tirelessly and have done a great job communicating with us and doing everything in their power to get any employee, first responder, et cetera, tested in a timely fashion. So I know you and I have discussed it more so. I just wanted to add that to the list, so appreciate that.
Very well said. Good catch. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to have a reminder, I meant to do it earlier, the mayor stated the city is one week from today. So the mayor has decided to have it in this room, primarily because the audiovisual can be broadcast, and we're encouraging people to attend remotely, obviously with the limited capacity to this room. Normally, that's a more well-attended event, so there is limited capacity to this room, so just a reminder of that. Thank you.
Do you have a time?
Seven, but we can figure that out for the posting. Thanks.
All right. Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Prince.
And during Mr. Mamalenti's well-taken comments, I was reminded that in addition to recognition for all our city employees, who are all deserving of it, the men behind the door in the room who pop out every once in a while to help us with our IT-related issues have really been integral and of great benefit, not just to Mr. Emmons, but to all of us, as we have worked through the vagaries of our remote meetings. So thank you to our IT staff who work long and hard and then have to stick around for council meetings over and above that. So we appreciate the work that they do as well.
Any other new business to come before the council? If not, then a motion to adjourn is in order. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.